All right, good evening, everybody. I got seven o'clock straight up, so I will call the February 27th Citrus Heights City Council Meeting to order. And we will, we did our meeting, so we will start with the flag salute. And Brett, will you please lead us? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replays Monday, March 30th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
All right, next item is approval of the agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is presentations, and there are none. The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
All right, we'll start with Councilmember Middleton.
I have no comments.
Okay, let's see if we can all top that. Councilmember Bruins.
Oh, so sorry. That's short. Had a regional sand meeting yesterday, nothing really dramatic to report. We had a financial condition update, things are going well. So that's about all I have to say about that. And tonight, most of us and many of our staff attended the grand opening of the Oars Retirement and Memory Care Facility, which is a gorgeous facility on Greenback. It's a wonderful asset to our community, and if you have the opportunity, you should stop in and take a look at it. And the only other thing is I just want to announce that on March, I didn't write the date down.
Ten.
Let's see, it's...
Just this what you're talking about?
Nope.
Okay.
Hang on a second here. March 20...
Late.
Okay, I need a police officer to tell me. Commander Russo, when is our cornhole?
March 13th.
Thank you. March 13th, we, PAL is hosting a cornhole event, and it's $50 for two people to come and play and shoot in the cornhole slab thing, and eat and drink and have a good time. It's a fundraiser, sorry, I really screwed that up. The fundraiser for PAL, come out and have a good time, join us out there.
So I heard March 13th.
March 13th, at the Community Center.
At the Community Center, and what time?
It starts at 5:00. Look on the PAL website. I really shouldn't have announced this, I don't have...
Preparation isn't one...
I thought I had it all written down here, and I was so wrong.
Okay, so yeah, go to the CHPD website, they have a link to the PALS, and you can get all the information.
Thank you, listen to him.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. To top that one, hopefully I can come up with a date quicker, but we have Coffee with a Cop coming up, March 4th, March 5th, something like that. I don't know if any of them know that one.
One of them will be looking it up and get back to us, I'm sure.
Coffee with a Cop.
March 4th.
March 4th, at Starbucks, Sylvan Corners.
Cool, what time?
At 10:00 in the morning?
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m., there we go.
Is that a Saturday or a weekday, what?
That should be a weekday.
Okay, so Wednesday, where most of us are working, all right.
Had an airboard meeting today, nothing too spectacular, decided to spend $6.5 million of your tax dollars on 21 trucks for Pepsi, to be able to drive around with electric trucks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great idea, it's a lot of money, and hopefully it'll make a difference with your air somehow. Next thing was, wanted to say that some, following up on some previous comments over the last council meetings regarding the homeless issue, participated in a webinar with Planning Commissioner Tim Schaefer in regards specifically to the aspect of homeless and camping and the Boise case and what that caused. One of the main things that I took out of that was that it is possible for parks, park districts, to close their parks overnight to anybody, so hopefully we can maybe figure out a way to communicate with our parks folks about moving forward with that idea and dealing with that. I have had a few meetings with the city manager, the chief of police, and the city attorney, some very positive meetings, and while we have some continuing concerns, we also have a lot of success stories, a lot of things that we're doing right in Citrus Heights, and I think we need to toot our horn a little bit more about that. The chief is going to do a presentation a little bit later, and I think tell us a little bit of something about that. And then I would like to see us in the future bring that kind of information back to the community, because we are working hard on this issue. I think we are above and beyond, way far beyond, what most communities in this region experience in the level of homelessness as it relates to not impacting our community. Other communities are getting hit, I think, harder, but we still want to stay ahead of things, and so we want to make sure that you understand what we're doing and some of those success stories. And then I believe there's a willingness to look for resources to hopefully push towards those things, and still be aggressive about things, even though we don't have, I think, the problem that other communities have, we don't want to get to that problem. And so hopefully we'll see all that, but I think it's important that the community realizes that we are doing a lot of things, and we hopefully will show you that in the near future. And then the final thing is, I see some kids in the audience in the back there, and if they wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and telling us who they are and why they're here, and then we'll get to know them a little bit.
Yeah, it's you, young men, come on.
There's a microphone right there.
Right there in the podium, just state...
Pull that down a little bit, go on there, be a leader.
Yeah, and just state your name and why you're here. I'm assuming this is for a merit badge of some sort.
My name is Peter. I am from Troop 212, Pack 212.
Pack, okay.
We are from Citrus Heights.
Why are we here?
We're here to earn a merit badge.
Well.
Isn't it?
It's part of our requirements.
Right. We're sorry that this is what you get for your merit badge, but it is what it is. So thank you, Peter, for coming out.
It's great.
All right, let's get the rest of them up here. Everybody's got to get their 30 seconds of fame.
My name is Tucker, and...
What school you go to, Tucker?
Yeah.
What school do you go to? I go to Woodside K.
Oh, very good.
Great, thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
Um, my name is Pierce Campanella. I... Um...
That's great.
I go to...
School.
A school called C and P, whatever, Montessori C and P.
Very good.
Um, America, whoever.
All right, thank you. Good job.
My name is Jonathan.
Welcome.
And I go to Caseburg Elementary.
Cool, thank you, Jonathan.
And last.
My name is Tristan, and I go to John Adams Academy in Roseville.
That's just her, nice place. Good job. We won't hold it against you that you're going to school outside of Citrus Heights, so that's not your fault.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. And Pack 212, is that right?
Pack 212.
Great, thank you. All right, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Miller.
Thank you. A week ago Wednesday, attended another Sacramento Transportation Authority Ad Hoc Committee meeting. I'll refer to that as STA from now on. Just finalizing the proposed transportation expenditure plan for a proposed extension and renewal of Measure A, the sales tax for roads and transit. Friday, I was at John Adams Academy for the Army Citizens Advisory Committee for the Rhino Division Recruiting Battalion. Saturday night was fun. Pet Owners of Citrus Heights, or Pooch, held their pasta dinner fundraiser for the Sebar Sea Dog Park, and these folks were really fun. Anybody who likes dogs is okay with me. Yesterday, we had an STA special meeting of all the board members, and the updated transportation expenditure plan was presented to the crowd, and it will give 60% of the sales tax proceeds to roads and 40% to transit. That's not really a true split, because if we got money for roads, we'll spend some on the items like Smart Ride or whatever, so some transits included that as well, but it would be much-needed money to repair our roads in Citrus Heights to augment what we get from SB 1 and the original sales tax. And that'll come in front of this council sometime in April, I think, whether we want to give a thumbs ups or thumbs down to the new tax measure. And again, today, we were all at the Oars Senior Living Grand Opening, except for Portia, I don't know. Everybody's looking for her, but I had to call you out.
Sorry.
I'm over it, I just had to, and that's it.
Great. And just one clarification to one thing the Vice Mayor said. The STA potential ballot measure, if it comes to us, it will come to us for us to vote yes or no in agreement to put it on the ballot. You all, as citizens, will actually make the determination if it's a done deal or not. So I just want to be clear, we don't say yes or no it's going to happen, it's just to allow it on the ballot. But we could say no, and if the majority of the area says yes, it's still going, so just so you know.
Thanks for that clarification.
Got it. All right, a couple of things from my end, I think you heard from several of us, we were at the Oars earlier today, it's a senior living facility. I have to say, it's probably one of the nicest, if not the second nicest, I've been to. The other one happens to be in Citrus Heights as well. Again, it's for folks, as they get older, if you lose cognitive ability, or they also have special needs, living assistance there. So it's on Greenback, if you drive by, it's a very nice facility. Monday night, I was here in the council chambers with Supervisor Frost, holding a community meeting. We did mention it, and I'll mention it to you, across the hall is one of the vote centers that is here in the county. If you all know, Tuesday, March 4th is voting day, you all got, because you're in Sacramento County and we're in an experiment, you all got your ballot in the mail, so everybody who lives in Sacramento County should have got a vote-by-mail ballot. You can fill it out, mail it, you can fill it out, drop it off here, you can fill it out, drop it off at the curb, you can throw your ballot away, come in here on the day of voting, on Tuesday, get a brand-new ballot, fill it out, and leave it. So they're trying to make it as easy as possible for you to vote. And my gut tells me that this is going to be rolled out statewide, because there's, based on the numbers of the last two elections that they've done this on, and there's only four counties in the state that are doing it this way right now, the numbers of actual people voting have gone up, so it is allowed, it's given an opportunity for more people to vote. So I fully expect this to be the way it will be going forward. I want to thank Jeanne advance, she's going to cover me at Secog next week while I'm out of the country. She's going to be on the hot seat because of something I brought up last meeting, but I'm sure she can handle it, and we'll communicate on that. Last thing I wanted to bring up is, and I actually have the date and the time here, so I won't get it wrong, March 10th, 3:30 to 5:30, right across the hall there, we're going to have a volunteer open house. So what this is, it's an opportunity for anybody in the community, whether you live in Citrus Heights or not, to stop by and learn about volunteering positions within the community center and here at City Hall. And yes, volunteer unpaid because you want to do it and, you know, get kudos, but they're unpaid volunteer positions, we'll have some food and drink, current volunteers will be here to share their experiences, what they do, and, yeah, I mean, just like any organization out there, we greatly depend on our volunteers to do stuff for the city, save the taxpayers some dollars, plus keeps you off the street and out of trouble, so it's a good thing, it's a good win for everybody. So again, March 10th, here, across the hall, 3:30 to 5:30. Stop in, we'll buy you a drink, and a Coke or a water, maybe give you something to eat small, and talk to you, so. With that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is public comment. Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times. We currently do not have any.
Nope. Oh, Mike.
Oh.
You should know the process, Mike, you shouldn't be late.
Yeah, well aware of the process. My name's Michael Augmasino. Tonight, I'm going to take a few minutes of your time to remind you that Monday night at 6:00, we're going to have a Reach Neighborhood Association potluck. I believe I sent each one of you a email. City manager is also invited, as well as city staff, if they wish to attend. I forgot to include you on that, but since you're going to be our guest speaker, anyway.
Yeah, it'd be nice to invite him.
This will be our seventh one, and this year, we were fortunate in that we were able to get the city manager to address us. Good food, as I said, it's a potluck. Everyone in the city is welcome to attend. All we ask is, if you're going to count, bring your favorite dish, a little bit, don't have to bring enough to feed everybody, I hope not, but anyway, you're welcome to come, and just thought I'd bring that up and remind you guys that you're welcome. And like I said, city staff, I forgot to send that out to them also, I'm sorry about that, so, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thanks for reminding us, and I'll save myself an email. I won't be there, but that's only because I'm out of the country next week, so, but I appreciate what Reach does, and I know the city manager will do a fine job of representing and...
Thank you.
Keeping the balls in the air while he's there, so thank you. All right, so any other people? Great, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar, item four.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero. Thank you, next item.
The next item is Sunrise Marketplace Management District Plan modification, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution modifying the management district plan of the Sunrise Marketplace Property and Business Improvement District.
Welcome, Megan.
Evening, Mayor Slowey and City Councilmembers. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager. I am here this evening in support of our Sunrise Marketplace Property Business Improvement District within our Sunrise Boulevard corridor, and their intention to modify their management district plan. With that, I'd like to give you a couple details to bring us up to speed. As a reminder, the Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid renewed in 2015 for a seven-year term ending in 2021. We start with that because, Council, you will see a lot of activity from staff and SMP regarding their renewal as it tees up for the next term, and what we're here to speak to tonight is not related to that. This is for the current term that is ending in 2021. Sunrise Marketplace is requesting a modification of their current management district plan because they would like to include public safety services within the scope of their organization. Should this modification be approved, the change would be effective now through 2021, and this will essentially serve as a pilot program to assess the effectiveness of public safety services provision, gather data, success points, so that they can assess if that's something that they'd like to continue to provide into their next term. And again, as I mentioned, the next term is a separate process, and it will come before you for action later this year. So to make this change to their management district plan, it does require a series of procedures, and the summary of that is before you. We began before council at the January 23rd meeting with the resolution of intention to modify hearing, and that was approved on consent. February 17th, we sent a copy of that resolution to the 76 property owners that make up Sunrise Marketplace. And I would like to say thank you to our city clerk, Amy Van, who, in addition to the resolution, also included this really great informative cover letter that is clipped on the PowerPoint to make sure that our property owners understand and synthesize the information. And then we published the resolution of intention in the Sacramento Bee on February 20th, and are now before you this evening for the final public hearing to modify the management district plan. So, next steps, should the management district plan amendment be approved, Sunrise Marketplace will pursue the provision of public safety services to its membership. And with that, I would like to acknowledge Kelly Rankin with Civitas, the legal firm supporting Sunrise Marketplace in this process. She is in the audience for any subject matter questions, and then I'd like to open it up for questions.
So in a nutshell, this would allow the marketplace to be able to independently work out a contract, if they could, with the CHPD for services?
It could be with the CHPD or other options.
Okay, fair enough. The entire P-Bid place, okay, that makes sense. Go ahead.
This is a modification of the existing, it's modification of the renewal?
This is the modification of the existing.
Oh, it is, okay.
And is not relevant to the renewal.
That's right, okay.
It's a pilot, it's a...
That's why I wanted to clarify.
All right, any other questions or comments for Megan? If not, this is a public hearing, right? So I will open it for anybody to come up and comment. Seeing nobody running up, close the public hearing. And then you're looking for a resolution from our end, as outlined here, okay?
Yes. So I move that we adopt a resolution modifying the management district plan of the Sunrise Marketplace Property Improvement District to include this trial...
Amendment.
Yeah, services.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is public hearing, item six. The subject is Sunrise Village Shopping Center remodel at 5425 Sunrise Boulevard, and the Planning Commission recommends you approve the three motions that are outlined on your agenda.
Thank you. Welcome, Allison.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudez is here with the Planning Division with a fairly large project for you tonight, so we'll walk through it. Excited to say that Sunrise Village is proposing to remodel and expand their center, and it's our major shopping center at Madison and Sunrise, it's quite an improvement here that we have coming, so take, let's take a look. We have several entitlements with this project, a design review permit for their new design that they're proposing, a use permit that will allow the addition of a drive-through in that center, a sign permit exception, as they're going to be requesting some archway signage over the driveways, a tree permit, and then an ordinance text amendment for our signage. As mentioned, this item did go to the Planning Commission in January, and they have reviewed it, and they are forwarding a recommendation of approval on all the entitlements. And just to remind where we're at, Sunrise Village, they're at the northwest corner of Sunrise and Madison, 15-acre shopping center, currently familiar with the Joann's Fabrics in there, there's a Rite Aid, there is a Haber Burger and some other food eateries in the center, and so this project encompasses that entire center. This map shows the significance of the changes, so it might be hard to tell, but just to depict what this map is showing, the red lines are the new and the green are existing, so as you see the major buildings on the top of the slide there, the major part of the shopping center, there is two buildings that are actually going to be removed, and they're going to be rebuilt, but they'll be within... rebuilt, but they'll be with an expanded footprint. So, that's Major Four on the right, where that star is, and then in the middle there, where the other star is, both those existing buildings are actually going to be removed and rebuilt with a larger footprint. And then the restaurant pad building that's vacant down at the corner of Madison and Sunrise is being removed and rebuilt, and that's where the proposed drive-through is going. And so, basically, the entire shopping center now is one hundred fifty-seven thousand square feet. They're going to be removing thirty-five thousand. They'll be adding the new replacement buildings and the new pad building. And so, bottom line is, it's going to be increasing the shopping center by just about eighteen thousand square feet. The proposed design features, as you can see here, significantly different. The roof line is changing. It's going to be the flat roof, but at elevated heights, different heights, bringing some architectural relief to the building, some different composite wood throughout the center, the metal canopies, outdoor dining. One of the major improvements is the Jo-Ann, as I mentioned, that's there, is actually moving to the other tenant space where they sit now. That building will be combined into one larger space to accommodate a future gym, as shown here. So, it will, again, carry over the design features with the metal canopies and the composite wood and the varied roof heights. Jo-Ann, then, will be locating to the other adjacent buildings to where they are now. Right now, those little shops will be combined into one big space for the Jo-Ann's. They'll bring in some color into the center with the nice green, and also have, carry over the metal canopies. The restaurant pad that used to be a restaurant, I think it's vacant now, will have a new design feature as well, carries around, matches the rest of the center. And this is the new, what we call Pad Three, where the vacant restaurant is now, that will be removed and replaced with the multi-tenant building, but with the anchor there as the drive-through coffee of some sort, with the outdoor dining. This shows the site plan for the center focusing on the new drive-through. So, Madison Avenue, it's on the Madison Avenue side, so you can enter the shopping center from the Madison Avenue driveway, or you can enter it from Sunrise and reach that building. And there is two-way travel throughout that parking area, entering the drive-through there between Madison and the building that carries around with the order window and the pickup window, and then exiting the pickup window, cars will be able to turn right or go straight. So, great flow through the center and not creating any hazards over there, as people still have alternatives to go right or to go straight when they're exiting the drive-through. The site will also be improved with some pedestrian facilities. So, it's a large center. There is bus stations along Madison, so some pedestrian features will be added that will provide safe crossings from the street, from Sunrise and from Madison, to the pad buildings, and then from the pad buildings up to the major portion of the shopping center, as shown on this with the brown lines. Additional landscaping is also being added to the center, shown on this with the darkened areas. Those are all new areas of new landscaping. Sidewalk along Sunrise is going to be shifted, so we do get a separated sidewalk along Sunrise. So, there'll be a landscape, so we'll be Sunrise, and then a landscape planner, then your widened eight-foot sidewalk, and then some new additional landscaping features. Landscaping is a pretty significant part of the project. There is a lot of mature trees, about two hundred, more than two hundred within that shopping center. Several of the trees, unfortunately, are of a species that have caused a lot of damage and are not appropriate for the center. So, we are approving or re-recommending approval of several of those trees, but there are three significant areas that will remain landscaped, as shown here. Particularly want to pay attention to Pad Seven. And if you're familiar with that center, there's a very large, beautiful oak tree, and, you know, got to protect those oak trees. So, that tree is remaining, and all the other oak trees on the center are remaining as well. But the rest of the site, you see, there's quite a few trees that will be removed. The great thing is, a lot of new trees are coming back in that are much more appropriate for parking areas, and will, the damage of the center, the parking fields will be replaced and fixed, so there's no tripping hazards, and the new trees then will ultimately increase the shading that's in the parking lot, which is very important. Here's that beautiful tree that I was referring to, that could be protected. As you can see, when the shopping center was first put in, it was put on this pedestal, and so it remains. So, that will remain as a key feature of the center. As I mentioned, they are requesting a sign exception. We do have a process that we started about 2012 that does allow for what we call the sign exception, and they are, sign exceptions are when a center or somebody wants to do some signage that's really outside of the zoning code, but they do have this unique character, or they have some sort of improvements that they want to bring to the center or identify. And so, Sunrise Village is requesting two archway signs over the driveways, so two, one on Sunrise and one on Madison. They're proposing this to really bring an identity to that center, kind of with its upgraded image and new design. They felt it would really bring some elements and design and key features to the center for its identity, very similar to what's just across the street at the Quail Ridge Shopping Center. They have very similar.
Quail Point?
Quail Point, thank you. So, as I mentioned, the sign exception permit process was established to allow this creativity, allows the ability for, to bring this strong character, graphic character into a center, and it helps create that sense of place. What they're not for is they're not, the sign exception permit is not, we don't use it as a way for them to have more signage or larger signage, but it really is a way to focus and work with them on creating this identity. And so, we do review these applications individually, go through the process, and they were, have requested this as part of this package. And so, we have reviewed the driveway signage, and Planning Commission, like the design, are now recommending approval of it. They thought that the driveway, the arches did do that. They did bring a sense of place to this project. In addition to the design, the use permit, and the sign exception, the applicant did submit for a sign ordinance amendment. So, this would amend the city zoning code signage regulations. And what they have requested is that we amend the zoning code to increase our allowable square footage for wall signage from two square feet to three square feet. So, what this means is for every foot, linear foot of building frontage for a tenant, they get, now they get two square feet of wall signage for their business identification. They are requesting that to go to three square feet instead of two, but the caveats on this is that the tent, this building, will need to be three hundred feet back from the roadway, so this is not a blanket, straight across the board. Everybody gets three square feet. It will be for tenants that are back from the roadway, three hundred feet or more. And then, we did narrow that scope down, and we are recommending only to do this for businesses within our sign district known as Sunrise Greenback. So, I'll show you what that looks like here. So, basically, almost follows the boundaries of the marketplace. So, it's a heavy commercial area. So, this sign district follows these boundaries here, just Greenback to the north, Arcadia, down to Madison. And if you look at three hundred feet, it's about that black line. So, you can see that, you know, Sunrise Mall Buildings, Birdcage, most of those buildings are in excess of three hundred square feet, or three hundred feet back from the roadway. So, the proposed amendment would be that buildings that are three hundred feet or more from the roadway would be allowed to identify their buildings with this wall signage, with this increased square footage from two to three.
And when you say wall signage, you're talking about signage on the building itself?
Yes, this is just signage on the wall of the space. So, this is just an example of how you might look at this. If this building was back three hundred feet from the Boulevard, currently, they would be allowed two square feet of wall signage. Say this building is fifty feet wide, two square feet, then they would be allowed a hundred square feet of wall signage. Wall signage, that number then is broken up between all sides of the building. They can put it all on one side. They can split it up between four sides, or however they choose to use it, but that's their total number. So, if that three square feet increased to three square feet, then they would be allowed three times the fifty, so they'd get a hundred and fifty square feet, so some more square footage that they could, again, use on one side or divide it up. So, looking at this example, it is a slight increase. And looking at that, we talked about the Planning Commission. Now, you know, what, these buildings are quite a ways back from the roadway. There's a lot of pad buildings in the front of them now that block view, so they did support this change. I just did want to make sure that it's understood it is with only in that special sign district, so it's not something that will be citywide. It would be just in these sign district where we define most of the commercial buildings. Many of them are this three hundred square feet back. Talked about the general plan, goal number twelve, that really supports the sign amendment that's, you know, that states that creating, inviting and distinctive identity for the marketplace through its image, and coordinate and improve the signage within the Sunrise Marketplace District. It's all been included in our general plan for some time, so we feel this change does do that. So, just to recap what we went through, we're doing a sign review permit for the expansion of Sunrise Village. It's almost eighteen thousand square feet. There's a new pad building proposed. It will have the drive-through service, which requires that use permit. The new building designs, including the updated exteriors, the walkways, and the roof line, new landscaping and irrigation throughout the center, removal of the trees, and the replanting of additional trees, increasing the shading. Part of the signage package would be a master sign program, and that is where the property owner identifies the signs, what type of signage they want their tenants to use, gives them some alternatives, and it's all kind of predetermined. So, as tenants come in, that signage keeps consistent. So, that is part of the package that they submitted as well. They are requesting that sign exception for the installation of the two driveway signs, and then amendment to the sign code that would increase the wall signage from two to square feet for businesses three hundred square, three hundred feet or back within the Sunrise Village, the Sunrise Greenback Sign District. And before you is the recommendation brought forward from the Planning Commission. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here, if you have any detailed questions on the project.
Questions from the council to Allison.
Hi, Ally. Thank you for your report. I'm excited about this project. I think it's going to be fabulous. You had said in your narrative that the drive-through was a serving coffee product. Is this identified as a coffee house or coffee drive-through, or is it not identified yet?
It's unidentified, but I, we can have the applicant address that, but I believe it's targeted to be a coffee user of some type.
Okay, all right.
Brett, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, I mean, this is a big deal. This is, again, that area just continues to be revitalized more and more and more, and I hope our citizens realize that, that it's alive. It's alive. The mall is a concern, but we'll get there, but Citrus Heights is alive, and the Sunrise Marketplace is alive. When a project like this, I mean, they're spending a lot of money, obviously. When that happens to this level, does that mean, or do you know if the property is then reassessed for property values?
I don't know. The applicant, I'm sure, has much more information on that.
And I'm only curious because, again, that means more money to the city from property taxes, as we get very, very close to getting our property taxes. It's a big deal. It's a big deal, and I imagine that there are fees attached to things like the tree permit and the sign exception permit and stuff like that. Any ideas what kind of money we're talking in those permits?
They've paid those fees to file the application. Planning entitlements are paid on submission of the application. If I had to guess, we're probably about seventeen thousand dollars?
I don't know. Just something that I'm thinking of is maybe we can waive or return those fees, because, again, I think this, along with the sales tax base that's going to increase from the uses there, are going to bring a significant amount of more money back to us in that respect. And these aren't fees that, that we would normally see on projects, is the way I guess I would put it. They're fees that are being paid because we have these rules in place about what you can do with trees and what you can do with signs. And to do this beautiful project, they're having to do these other things, too, and just seems like something that we should consider as far as waiving.
Mr. Miller?
I typically, you know, like to see some kind of economic development incentives, and I think we're doing them with the sign ordinance and such. To waive the fees, the fees pay for our staff to do the work. In fact, they don't cover. So, if we could identify a way to cover that cost, where we would take it from the budget, Brett, we need to consider that, because we'd have to pay for our staff's time somehow.
They're already paid now.
Right. This covers the cost of their work. We could cut a police officer something to pay for that, and I'm not for that. So, you know, I'm a believer in economic incentives, but this, this isn't one of them. Perhaps deferring until they, until they get up and operating is a different story, but otherwise, this looks like a great project, and I'll take this time to tell our residents that it's imperative that we shop local here. If you shop outside our city limits, you pay for, if you go to Folsom, to the outlets, you pay for their police department. If you go to Roseville and the Galleria, you pay for their police department. With these improvements, I'm very encouraged that you can get what you need here in Citrus Heights and pay for our police department.
Great. So, before I open the public hearing, I have one question. I'm not sure if you can answer it, Allison, or we'll direct to the applicant after I open. You know, as everybody says, great improvements. We're doing facades, new buildings, new signs, in particular, the, you know, if we go forward, the archway sign just north of the Habit off of Sunrise. So, I'm thinking to myself, when I saw your plans, I saw Pad Five, but I didn't see anything about Pad Five, whether there was going to be any updates. And personally, I don't have anything against Wiener Schnitzel, but, you know, with this great improvement, I'm going to be turning it under a brand-new archway, looking at a building from the seventies with a paint schematic from nineteen seventies. And I'm just curious if there's any improvement slated for that particular slab. I mean, I know there's a lease there and all, but, you know, that kind of sets the tone, so I'm just curious. And again, I don't know if you can answer, if I should direct that to the applicant.
We'll let the applicant address that, because I believe that they're included in the design package, but they still have to work out with, like, the Rite Aid is actually not owned by them, so they're included in the design package, but they have to get Rite Aid to do them.
Got it. Okay. So, it is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, and if I could have the applicant address Wiener Schnitzel for me.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Mayor Slowey. I'm John Plumto with Malone-Geyer Partners. God bless Wiener Schnitzel.
Again, I have nothing against them. I'm just, I was just curious.
And thank you, Allison, for the project introduction. I don't know that I need to add very much to the lengthy project introduction that was already provided to you, but I'm more than happy to answer questions. Let me start first off by saying that we're super excited to be working with the city of Citrus Heights. It's been fantastic so far with all the people in the districts that we've been working with. We had initially met with city manager Boyd and others about two years ago, shortly after the purchase in 2017. Things were a little slow in the beginning, but we have really ramped up at this point. Matter of fact, we have already started our construction documents, and we're looking to submit some plans for this redevelopment very soon, and we want to get underway with this project in spring of this year. This is going to be a multi-phase project, so we're going to be probably working through 2022. The reason for that is there's multiple buildings, as Allison had mentioned, that we're tearing down and building new, and we have to move some tenants from one location to another location. But we're super excited. We're bringing a couple of new tenants into the space. Many of you may have heard that we've already struck a lease deal with City Sports Many of you may have heard that we've already struck a lease deal with City Sports Fitness Operator. They are gonna be occupying the large 53,000 square foot building that's in front of you on the screen. That's currently where Joanne's and Tuesday Morning is housed today. Joanne's will be moving into a brand-new building next door. They're increasing in size. That's part of the 17,000 square foot add that we had talked about. And we are working with coffee operators. I can't name them yet, but most of you know who that would be or who the, the prospects are for a drive-through location at our new pad building that will replace the existing CoCo's facility that shut down a couple of months ago. And a number of other retailers, food operators, service folks that will be joining us here very soon as well. We're currently in lease negotiations with a number of people. Merlone Guyer's typically very successful, not to toot our horn too much, but Delta Shores was one of our large projects in the city of Sacramento that we had leased almost 70 to 80% before we even put a shovel on the ground. And we're hoping to do the same thing here. So we're very excited about this redevelopment. And it's, we think it's gonna look fantastic. We know this is a prominent location. It's a revitalization of the Sunrise Marketplace corridor. And with the new materials and finishes and the building architecture and repurposing of the center with some new tenants, tenant mix, the site work that we're putting in, all the new landscaping that Allison talked about for shading, ADA pathways, new LED lighting, the new buildings. We just think it's gonna be fantastic. So we're super excited. Many of you might have seen that we've already done a little bit of work out there in terms of some patchwork, and we're clearing out some spaces so that we can show some prospective tenants what their new home might look like here in Citrus Heights. And that's going very well. So all in all, we're super excited to push this project through. With that said, I'm here to answer any questions. And I'll start with the Wiener Schnitzel question. That's an interesting one. So we do own that parcel. And I tell everybody, it was funny when we bought, when we purchased this property, our curb appeal was really Wiener Schnitzel off of Sunrise Boulevard. We're trying to encourage them. They are still in a lease. I'm not quite sure, I don't have leasing here today with me, how many more years they have left, but they're eager to stay. We're trying to encourage them with the nearly $15 million that we're driving into the center to at least paint their building or do something a little bit more than what's there today so that we have not an eclectic mixture of architecture, but hopefully something that's congruent with what we're trying to do. And we're certainly doing that throughout. As you may have seen in the presentation, all the monument signs are being refreshed and retrofitted with new materials and finishes. We're doing some right-of-way work, dedicating some land to the city also for some future bus routes and bus shelters. So we're hoping to get there with Wiener Schnitzel. We're working on that avenue.
That's all we ask.
One of the step-children of the center right now.
You have to have that funky uncle, you know.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Just, I'm very excited that you're here in Citrus Heights and just want to thank you for your investment in our community. And I'm, I'm assured that you will find that the citizens will, of our, of our city and our, and neighboring communities are equally as excited and will be making this a very successful endeavor for you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks, sir. I don't think we have any additional questions, so, but it is still a public hearing. So if anybody else in the audience wishes to address us on this matter? All right, seeing none.
Mayor, can I make a comment before council deliberation? Couple, couple thoughts here. One is, there was a discussion about maybe a waiver of some of the, some of the fees. When you do that, there's a potential implication of the applicant having to pay prevailing wage if there is some kind of benefit from the public entity. So that may cost them more money in the long run if, if that's what the council is considering doing. The applicants could certainly speak to that. But that's something to consider. Another, another thing in the recommendations, you'll notice, Mayor Slowey, you'll appreciate this, is we did consolidate, number two, there's, normally we're gonna be four motions. We made them into.
We appreciate the effort of reducing it. And since only, I'm not hearing anything in terms of wanting to discuss fees. So at this point, unless somebody brings it up in a motion, we'll take the motions that are in front of us. So again, I close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
So we're gonna do three separate motions, is that correct, council?
Correct.
Okay. So I will move that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to adopt a negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the Sunrise Village Shopping Center remodel project as shown in attachment four. Second?
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero.
And then based upon the finding, the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in the attachments five and 14, that we approve the design review permit to allow the expansion and renovation of an existing shopping center project, approve the use permit to allow the construction of a new retail pad building with drive-through services, approve a tree permit to allow the removal of numerous trees, approve an exception to sign regulations permit and master sign program to allow the placement of archway signage over two driveway entrances. I move that.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Councilman Daniels, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero.
And then finally, I, I move that we introduce and read by title only and waive the first full reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, amending the zoning code to increase the allowable wall signage area for certain properties within the Sunrise Greenback Special Sign District as shown in attachment 15.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion by Bruin, second by Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Allison. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing the changes.
Thank you very much.
And the paint on Wiener Schnitzel. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is regular calendar items, which are none. The next item is department report, item seven. The subject is 10-year budget model and fiscal year 1920 mid-year budget review.
Woo-hoo, exciting stuff.
Well, good evening, mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager here with Tammy Nosardi, Finance Manager. We actually have two different department reports for you this evening. And I do apologize, I had hoped that I would be fully recovered by now, but my voice goes in and out as I talk. So Tammy is actually going to present where we are right now for our fiscal year 1920 budget status.
Good evening. As she mentioned, Tammy Nosardi, Finance Manager with the Administrative Services Department. Tonight, we're going to be doing the presentation of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 mid-year update. As you recall, back in June of 2019, council adopted the city's first two-year budget. For fiscal year 2019, 2020, the adopted budget was the $62.2 million, which the general fund, which includes the general fund, the enterprise fund, which is solid waste, the special revenue funds and the capital funds. This evening, we're going to talk about the general fund as it is the main operating fund for the city. So as the slide shows, the budget was adopted for the projected, the, excuse me, the budget adopted for the general fund was, and the revenues was $32,668,679. Expenditures were $32,772,862. So as you remember, when we did the adopting of the budget, we already knew we were gonna have a shortfall of $104,182. As of right now, as of February 10th, our revenues are coming in at 51% of budget and our expenditures are 55% of budget. I did want to mention that with the revenues, typically revenues are one to two months behind. So as of right now, for example, sales tax is being represented. We only have up to November right now. So revenues will be catching up. And looking at this slide, it just kind of shows you some of the more detail of the revenues with the 51% and expenditures with the 55.4%. So with the revenues being consistent with our budget projections and the departments are operating within the approved budget allocations at this time, we are recommending no budget adjustments are going to be needed for this fiscal year's budget. Then just as the non-general fund, here's just an overview of those. Did want to point out that for the transit, where it shows revenues are already met at 104%, that doesn't mean we're gonna get double that. It's that we have already received the administrative costs for the whole fiscal year, and that's what's represented there. So at this time, this information is informational only. No action is required. And if you have any questions?
Always good to hear no adjustments recommended.
That's right.
Means you guys forecast pretty good?
Thank you.
Questions for anybody? All right. Skated on that one, let's go to the next one.
Okay. Well, the next item, our consultant's going to join me here to, as soon as Tammy gets us loaded up here on the, on the computer. The consultant, Bill Zanoni, will come up and help present on this item as well. We had, part of our strategic goal was to come back to council and provide a bit of an explanation and background for our 10-year budget model. With our budget model, it's included within each city's adopted budget. And what it is is a forecasting tool. It's not something that, once it's adopted, it stays that way in perpetuity. It changes. We use that as our forecasting tool. So whenever we get ready to start our budgeting, we put in the numbers that we know. We use our estimates from the assumptions that we build into that 10-year budget model to get an idea and look to see what that's gonna look like for the current year and projected out 10 years into the future. When we had our strategic retreat, one of the questions was to provide an update for the 10-year budget model and just see where we were. And so what we did is building on the budget model that was in the adopted budget. This is what we're going to explain to you now, how that, what we've done sort of historically, where we are now and where we're looking at for the future. So again, I'd like to introduce Bill Zanoni, our consultant.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Excuse me, Bill Zanoni with Municipal Resource Group. As Rhonda said, this is a, this is an ongoing process. It's something that the city does every year, but it's not something that's just done once a year. It's something that we update, look at, constantly update several times a year. And, and this is a forecast. It's, if, if these numbers that we're gonna look at were, were spot-on for the next 10 years, that'd be, be pretty good. We could, we could sell this. But it is a forecast, and it's based on assumptions. And we'll go, we'll go through those assumptions. So the purpose of a forecast is several-fold. One is to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. One of the key components of fiscal responsibility is fiscal planning. And that includes looking forward five to 10 years. In this case, we've gone out 10 years to identify any potential issues and, and then to take action, to develop a corrective action plan for any, any bumps that may, may be identified as, as possibly coming down the road with, with the goal of reducing the risk of fiscal crisis. And I think, I think if you were to look around, there were a number of, of cities that prior to the last fiscal crisis back in eight or nine, 10 years ago, did not do a lot of fiscal planning and paid the price for it and, and took them quite a while to recover because they hadn't planned accordingly. So we don't want that to happen, happen here. So in, in our, our financial forecast that we've prepared, we've used some key assumptions that are, we believe are conservative, which is what you want them to be, but also realistic. And we've assumed an inflation rate going forward of 2.5% to 3% a year. We've assumed that the city will continue to deal with revenue neutrality through fiscal year 21, 22. And then at that point, we'll begin to receive, receive and keep its, its share of the property tax revenue. We've also assumed that we will fully utilize the, the $12 million line of credit financing that was issued back in November of 2018. And throughout this process, we, we, we are measuring our, our anticipated performance against reserve policy that the city council approved several months ago. And as you may recall, that reserve policy stated that the city would at all times try to main, strive to maintain a minimum level of reserves in the general fund of 17% of operating expenses. 17% is just a little bit over, just about two months of operating. That is, that is the minimum recommended level. And ideally, and I think the discussion with finance committee, from the finance committee was the goal would be to be well above that minimum level. So based on the information that we've plugged into our, our forecast, the preliminary results are that we are projecting an operating shortfall three out of the next five years. And that we are drawing down, going to be drawing down, general fund reserves below the minimum level. And this is even with the assumption that we have a significant number of unfunded needs that, that we've identified that are not currently budgeted, have not been budgeted for the last several years and aren't included in the, in the forecast. The, the other assumptions that have gone into this model is that the city has implemented cost-saving measures over the last several years through extensive efforts at reorganization, eliminating staff positions that have become vacant and maintaining vacancies whenever possible, negotiating benefit cost-sharing measures with the various bargaining units. The city has deferred major capital expenditures and has explored wherever, wherever feasible, grant funding and partnerships with other entities. Some of the delayed or unfunded, what we're calling critical items are, in capital expenditures, one of the main ones is residential streets. There is a, a pavement management index that the city is well below where it needs to be. The, 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 the minimum level of funding that the Public Works Department has identified that they believe they need is a minimum of $5 million a year for the next 10 years. Right now, we have zero plugged in. Nothing budgeted this year and nothing anticipated at, at this point.
And one of the updates with regards to the street program is the city is currently having that updated to see where we need to be. And based on taking the assumptions and the, the results from 20, I think it was 12, and bringing that forward to today, by the time, most of our residential streets, that all has to be done with local funding. You don't have the opportunity for applying for grants or going out and trying to get partnership development on that with your residential streets. And so what happens is, when we even apply for grants, say for Auburn Boulevard, or we do these capital projects, or they're approved, we still have to provide a certain level of local government support. When I talked to General Services and we were looking at this, we haven't, we don't have the results yet from the current study that's being done. But if we take that old one and bring it forward, the, the realistic number that what we need to keep our streets at the index level is about $15 million a year. And that would be residential and the main corridors. And as Mr. Zanoni said, in the current budget that we've had and in several budgets that we have adopted recently, there was nothing budgeted for our capital expenditure to be spent on streets from the general fund money. It can come. It can come from other places, what we can allow from that, but it's obviously not been enough to satisfy the work that needs to be done.
So that's a, that's definitely an item that's on the, on the critical, critical list. Couple other items that, that have not been either adequately funded or funded at all in the last several budget cycles are fleet and equipment needs. In order to balance the budget this year, we, we eliminated a contribution to the equipment fund. So as, going forward, as the city's vehicle fleet continues to age, if we're not putting money into that fund to replace those items, we fall further and further behind, the same with facility repairs. We, we should be setting money aside for these major repairs so that we can build up funding and that funding is available when it's required. A recent, a recent example is audiovisual equipment for the community center. That's a, a significant one piece of equipment, but we have not been able to build up a, a reserve to, to fund that. And so now we've got to identify a funding source. And then the last one that we identified that we have not been funding on a go-forward basis is contributions to the OPEB, other post-employment benefit retirement trust. So those are items that we ideally should be setting money aside for going forward, and at this point, we have not plugged those in. So the, this, this 10-year forecast that I, that is up here right now, you can see that we've assumed revenues. This fiscal year, our general fund revenues are budgeted at just a little bit over $37 million a year, and that includes the revenue neutrality money that, it's in on the top and is backed out at the same amount on the bottom. That, that we're projecting that our revenues will grow from $37 million this year with a, with a rate of inflation of 2% to 3% for some items. One of our major sources of revenue is sales tax. That's growing at a much slower pace than that right now. That revenues will increase from $37 million, we're projecting up to $46 million over the next 10-year period. That's the good news. On the other side, our expenditures are increasing at a, at a faster pace. And so what you can see is, for example, in fiscal year 1920, as Tammy said, the, the budget, as it was approved, had a, a budget shortfall of $100,000. But as you'll recall, when that budget was presented, in order to get to that $100,000 shortfall, we are utilizing $1.3 million of our line of credit financing to help balance the budget this year. And we're in the two-year budget cycle, over these two years, we're projecting to use $1.3 million this year and $1.2 million next year. And that was really the intent of, one of the reasons for that line of credit financing was to, was to help offset the anticip, some of the anticipated shortfall until the city began to receive its property tax revenue. So right now, we're assuming that we'll use the line of credit, $1.3 million this year, $1.2 million next year, and another million and a half in fiscal year '21, '22, just to, to cover operating costs. And even with that, you can see that our, our level of reserves will drop, this is un, general fund unrestricted reserves, will drop from about $5.3 million this year, down to, if you look at where the arrow is in fiscal year '24, '25, assuming our assumptions are correct, that we will actually deplete our reserves over the next five years. This is, this is not drastically different. This is very, very close to the, the information that we, we had when we did the budget last year, or nine months ago. But it is definitely something that we've got to, to look at and, and address going forward.
Question. Back to that chart.
Yes. Where's it? Right there. There we go, sorry.
Thank you. Also in that year, the, the '24, '25, we will have paid off the line of credit?
That's correct. So we, we will draw down the line of credit and then we will pay it back. We will pay it back in '24, 20, final payment in fiscal year '24, '25.
That gets us out of debt.
So in fiscal year, if you can see in fiscal year '24, '25, we have a $7.5 million payment of the, of the $12 million balance.
Thanks.
Okay. So what, what this chart depicts is, is our, our general fund reserves compared to what our, our, really our, our minimum level should be. So the blue line is our 17% minimum level. So really, we don't want that red line, which is our projected reserves, to ever go below the blue line. In fact, it should be well above that line. And we are right now below the line. We are projecting that we will continue to be below that line and actually drop further below through fiscal year '24, '25. And then it will, it will start to climb. But again, the reason it's climbing is because at that point, you will start to receive property tax revenue. We will have paid off the line of credit, but we have not, we have not plugged in to this, to this forecast, the funding for the, the, the capital needs, the equipment needs, the, the, the OPEB trust funding. We, we did make a run at that, and when we, when we, when we did that with our current revenue base, that red line went further down and didn't, and didn't pop back up.
And as Bill mentioned, when we did, we did go through and take the current budget model that's, the tenure model that's in the budget, and we put in the assumptions the way that we believe that they should be, with the amount to put into our replacement fund, doing a conservative $5 million into capital projects, and then funding out our OPEB. By the time that we got fiscal year '28, '29, the city was $37 million in the hole, in the red, below zero. So as you can see, we use it as a forecasting tool, and it is a very powerful tool because it gives us a visual look at where we are right now and where on this current path, current assumptions, current world we live in. It would look like if nothing else changed but our assumptions going 10 years into the future. But because we saw the recession and for, you know, several different reasons and factors, we had to remove out everything that we could that was discretionary and that was not an, a given ongoing purchase or expense to try and balance the budget and utilize our reserves as little as possible. And so even though this picture looks like you see the general fund reserve balance climbing, the reality is between now and that time period, we will have buildings that need repair, we will have vehicles that need to be replaced, we will have equipment, we will have regular maintenance. Any capital expenditure, we don't budget for someone taking out a street light, and sometimes those signal lights can be $50,000 or more. Every time something like that happens, that comes directly out of our general fund. If our adopted budget is already at a deficit of $100,000 and we have these unknown expenses that we're unable to plan for and budget for right now, that just drives that red line down further. And so what we do is the best that we can, and we try to forecast that out. And given that most of the time, these are just assumptions and guesses, reality is always different than what we plan for, and we have been very fortunate and, I think, very fiscally responsible in order to keep these numbers where they are right now and trying to keep things on a positive note. But sooner or later, some of these unfunded needs could catch up with us.
And, and maintaining a prudent level of reserves is, is, it's, it's critical. It's, it's especially given where we are. Right now, we've gone well beyond the, the timeframe that, that typically occurs before another slowdown in the economy. So if and when that, or when that does occur, you need to, you need to have a cushion, and that cushion is your, is your, your level of reserves. So that's, that's kind of the, the summary of, it's, it's, it's not all bad. I think the good, the good thing is that, that we've identified that, that we've, we've got a, an issue, a challenge that needs to be, needs to be addressed. The next steps are, we're going to continue to review the unfunded requirements and see if we can come up with some specific recommendations for what might be a, a realistic prudent level to, to plan for. We're going to continue to identify and hopefully implement any, any operating cost efficiencies where they might be possible. We're getting to the point now where we'll be looking at, even though the, the city council adopted a two-year budget, the departments will be going through their, through their projections for next year, and we'll see if there's any adjustments that could be made to the, to the, to the second year of the budget. And then another alternative or next step would be to explore any locally, any enhanced locally controlled funding options, and continue to update this forecast and bring this back to the finance committee and to the council periodically so that you're, you're, you're well aware of, of where we are and the challenges that we're facing, and come up with an action plan to address this.
Great.
This is not a, an item that we're asking for any action for this evening, it's for information only, and we can answer any questions you might have.
So one, I just want to say thanks for the realistic assessment. I mean, I, you know, we use a forecast to look at where things are. Anybody who recalls the beginning of this city, when we used the 10-year budget model, it was probably only six or seven years into being a city when we showed the numbers going into the red. So here we are, '21, '22, somewhere around there, you know, years past becoming a city. And yes, there, you know, we've managed to push them out, and so they are starting to catch up, but, you know, we're aware of it. And, and that's the first thing you need to do, is be aware of it, and then, you know, how do you tackle the challenges head-on? So appreciate, you know, and the biggest thing to me is not hiding it from anybody and, you know, having those discussions. So I, I think this was helpful, and, you know, I can't personally change the economy, but, you know, we, we've got a good group of people not only working for the city, but citizens, so there, there are options out there, and we're just, you know, as we go forward, we're just going to have to keep them in mind, so. Any questions for Bill? Bill, thank you, appreciate, you know, I know you live for these numbers, I enjoy them too, being a banker, you know, I wish they would have been a little more rosy, but, you know, that's the way it is, so, thanks. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is department report, item eight. The subject is the Police Department's annual report.
Okay, we're expecting a little cheer out of the Police Department report. We don't, we don't want to end on that note, we want to end on... Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I've come bearing good news, so we'll end on a positive note. Cass? Oh yeah, come up. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my distinct privilege and honor to present to you our annual report for last calendar year. And before I do, I want to start by thanking my team. Our Assistant Police Chief, Gina Anderson, is not here this evening, but I do have our two commanders, Commander Turcot, who's in charge of the Operations Division, and Commander Russo is in charge of Special Services out there. My executive team really shines. I'm proud of them and the hard work that they do. My tenure this year, or this last year, through April of this year, as President of the California Police Chiefs Association, I was blessed to have a team that really could help me manage the organization seamlessly and really shined. I'm, I'm proud of them and all that they did. And I also want to point out the rest of our staff here. I know we've got a few dispatch supervisors in the audience, a few of our managers and supervisors, we have an officer. If you can just stand up for just a minute, all of you. That, they are indicative of the men and women of our Police Department, and I just could not be more proud. Like a proud parent, it's, these are the folks that, that run the operation and in the middle of the night to keep our community safe. Our employees know that this community shows a tremendous amount of support for their Police Department. They love us, and frankly, we love them. So we hire great people, we train, train them, we promote good people, and I'm just proud of all the work that they've done. So thank you all for your, your good work. I'm joined tonight by, with Cass Burnett, she is our admin management manager. She helped me with this, this staff report. And Dominic Cooper out there is our crime analyst, he's the number cruncher. So if, I'm proud to say that he works around the clock to help us focus on crime in citrus heights and traffic collisions. So I'm not going to read this slide, but I, I do want to touch on the fact that this document, this, this PowerPoint that we're about to present to you will be on our website tomorrow. That is a matter of us being transparent. We believe in transparency, this, our entire city government is transparent, and so this slide here is so that when people read it on our website, it's just kind of an introduction. But I share that with you because transparency is really important to us. And I also want to thank too, before we get started, my colleagues, Rhonda Rivera and Colleen McDuffie. You know, the, the Police Department's not an island unto ourselves, it's, it takes a team, and so the entire city, working together, and our city manager, we couldn't do it without all of your assistance as well, so thank you for your partnership. And our city attorney, so thank you all. Uniform crime reporting is what we report to the Department of Justice every year, and every law enforcement agency in the United States reports their crime stats. And this is kind of our, a report card, if you will, and these are the, what we call the big eight. The top four, homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, of course, are our person crimes, and then the bottom four, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson are our property crimes. If you look at the far right column there and the first blue line, you'll see that person crimes in 2019 were down 4%, or 13 fewer victims than the year prior. And the bottom light blue line, property crimes, was down 9%, or, and put another way, 234 fewer victims of property crimes in 2019. So pretty remarkable numbers there. By the way, a lot of these slides have a lot of numbers and a lot of information. I'm not going to go through all of them for the sake of time, but I will just highlight on, on some of the more important ones. When we look at crime trends, we typically look at a five-year view. This helps to inform us for the future and also make sure that we understand our past and, and allows us to really focus on where we need to deploy our resources. Your Police Department meets minimum twice a month to talk specifically about crime and traffic, and we make sure that we understand and predict where we believe crime is going to occur, and that's how we deploy our resources based on time of day, day of the week, and so forth. And you can see here in the, the purple bar graph there represents 2019. So there's a 9% reduction in crime in 2019. Or put another way, 247 less victims of crime last year compared to the year prior. Now this slide is my absolute favorite slide. Because we're a young department, we can show and fit it all on one slide, our entire history. So this goes back to 2007, and you can see from 2007 through 2019, the remarkable work that's, that's happened here. And what, what I really enjoy about this slide is this highlights why having your own Police Department really matters. It makes a difference, not just because of, of the crime rates that you can see we've driven down since the beginning. I had a great predecessor. I had a great predecessor. I won't name him, but he's a great, was a great police chief, a great city manager. We've done remarkable things here. And on top of that, what really makes a good Police Department best is when we have the community's support working with us to fight crime, and we have that ingredient here in Citrus Heights. So last year, 2019, was the lowest crime rate we've experienced in the history of your Police Department. This is our traffic collisions. Just across the top there, you'll see, or the top left, that first column, you see there's three categories: fatalities, injuries, and property. That's how we divide our traffic collision. So I'm happy to say in 2019, we had zero fatalities. If you look at the five-year trend in 2015, we had six. 2016, we had five. 2017, we had four. 2018, three. And then last year, we had zero. So that's a great, that is a great trend, and I'll tell you that our traffic team has worked really hard, not only on enforcement, but really a lot of education as well. Injury collisions were down 4%, and property collisions were up 7%. But if you look at those numbers, that's really 420 in '18 versus 451 in 2019, so a difference of 31 property collisions more. That bottom-left box there represents the top three collision factors. The number-one reason for collisions in Citrus Heights was unsafe speed, 28%. Second was improper driving, I'm sorry, improper turning, and then third was DUI. And you'll see at the bottom, across that bottom banner there, that 6% resulted from red light violations in 2019 versus 8% in 2018. So in total, our collisions were up 2%, so slightly up. To highlight just the department briefly, and this is where you're going to see a lot of numbers here, I won't touch all of these things, but it will be on the website tomorrow. The left box there are all the people we hired last year, 11 police officers, eight reserve, and you see there, the total hire were 32. And I want to touch just a minute on those police officers because the lion's share of those officers came from what we have called our pathway programs, our pipeline programs. That's to include our community service officers, our explorers, and our, will someday be our Mesa Verde High School kids, but a lot of these hires came from those programs. And that's a transition we started making about three years ago. Rather than relying on employees from other departments, we're now growing our own, if you will, and we're getting them from our local community. And that's a long-term investment, but it's going to pay off, and it's already starting to. The green box there, you'll see, this is some of our unsung heroes, if you will. This is property and evidence. They work in the back office of the Police Building. They're also our crime scene investigators. But you'll see there that they processed over 10,000 items last year in the property and evidence room, destroying 5,700. That's remarkable. I mean, they touch every piece of evidence and property that we book, and that's a lot of, a lot of stuff going through there. And there's three employees back there, right? Yeah, three full-time employees for 10,000 pieces of evidence. It's pretty remarkable. Something I learned through this process, you see that gold banner at the bottom. When we recover money, whether it's for safekeeping or through an investigation, before we release it back to somebody that's claiming it, we do a search with the county, and if we find that they owe outstanding child support or victim restitution, that money goes to the county first. So we recovered $16,000 in revenues that went back to victims and to help with child support, for unpaid child support. And then the top-right one there, you'll see those are the numbers of people we've promoted throughout last year. The Operations Division, our K-9 unit there had 36 demonstrations, 266 deployments of our Canines, and 61 violent criminals apprehended. And you might remember, we had an officer-involved shooting last year on Greenback Lane near the mall, and the K-9 in that scenario really played a remarkable role in that it tackled the suspect who was shooting at our police officers and very likely saved some lives. So we're proud of that. Our K-9 officers and their partners do remarkable work. Our traffic unit continues to do hard work there, and you'll see the bottom green box, 96 DUI checkpoints and saturations. That is a city council priority through our strategic planning, so I'm proud to say that we've achieved that and then some. And that was due largely in part by a $140,000 grant that we obtained to pay for overtime for those DUI checkpoints. And as a result, we increased DUI arrests by 50% by being that proactive. That far-right column there, you'll see patrol calls for service, the 48,626, that's how many times somebody picked up the phone and called us for help. Officer-initiated activity, that's how many activity our officers did in car stops, pedestrian stops, making an arrest, 19,823. You add in animal services, and there are 4,200 calls, our POP Code Enforcement Rental Housing Inspection. The total field incidents were 74,456. It's a pretty remarkable number considering our population's right about 88,000, so it's, we're a busy agency. Our arrests there, you see our felonies were almost 1,000, and our misdemeanors were just over 1,400 for a total of 24, 11 arrests. 6,000 traffic citations and 318 quality-of-life or narcotic citations. And largely, those citations there are, as a result of enforcement with some of our homeless population. I want to thank at this time Councilmember Daniels for your kind comments earlier. We'll talk about homelessness in a minute briefly, but you're spot-on correct. There's a lot of great work going on, and here in Citrus Heights, our philosophy is a two-pronged philosophy, one of trying to get our Navigator to get as many homeless folks into the right programs and get them the help that they need, followed by the second prong, which is enforcement for those that are committing crimes and criminal acts. So thank you for your kind comments, and there's, we are doing a lot of great things. There's more work to do, but we've made a lot of good traction here. Our SWAT team, 240 hours of training. You can see there that they do quite a bit. Our mobile crisis support team in the middle column there, this is that middle dark blue box, 121 responses and 148 follow-ups. This is a social worker who rides in the police car with our officers. She responds to those who are having a mental health crisis or does follow-up for those we've experienced to help make sure that we deal with the long-term mitigation of some of their issues. And that's been a remarkable program because it really demonstrates CHPD's openness to bring in other services and other experts to help us deal with things like mental health. That purple box, I want to highlight just briefly, in records, 10,574 cases processed, but 15,000 people visited our lobby for help. Now, I don't know if you've ever been in a police lobby when it's busy and people are there wanting help, but not a lot of them are happy. They're there because something bad happened in their life. And our record staff are, again, some unsung heroes. They do remarkable work at really diffusing a lot of the emotion. But they had basically a small city come visit them. 15,000 people in our front lobby is a lot of, a lot of people. Our volunteer program, you'll see there, they continue to do remarkable work, 18,615 hours in that golden box there. And of course, Michael Lago Marzino won the Volunteer of the Year Award. I see him in the audience, so, Michael, thank you for your continued dedication and partnership. And our holiday referral program this year was championed by Commander Turcot and his staff. I would say that this year was probably one of our more successful years. 21 families adopted, 62 children, and 35 adults. It was really heartwarming to see that this year, and he did a fantastic job, him and his team. And that bottom blue line there, banner across the bottom, two lives saved utilizing Narcan. Now, this is something we started recently, in the last couple of years, where we have officers trained to use Narcan for those who've overdosed on drugs, or particularly fentanyl. And last year, we saved two lives by that deployment. That's, that's good stuff. Special Services Division, you'll see our Youth and Family Services Explorer Program, Pathway, PAL, and our Shop of the Cop. Our Explorer Program, we've ended up, a few of them as they age out, at the age of 20, we've hired them in the Police Department, and some of them have gone off into the military or college. In fact, we had a young lady who came back. She finished Marine Boot Camp, and she came back to visit us. She was proud, and she wanted us to see her in her Marine uniform, so that was, that was a fun experience. Our Pathway Program through Mesa Verde High School, last year, we hosted eight interns, and again, some of them have gone on to greater things, and some have actually stayed with us and enjoy looking for, working for us part-time. Our Police Activities League had eight events. Our Extreme Camp was a three-day camp, including horseback riding, rope course, and a river float day, and of course, our very popular Shop of the Cop during the holiday season. All that to say, our youth is very important to us. We recognize that they are a big part of our future, and so we put a lot of our efforts and focus on our youth programs. That purple box there, the Small Unmanned Aerial Systems Program, you'll see 364 missions, 66.25 hours of flight time. That also was a city council strategic item this year, so I'm proud to say that we have met and exceeded that expectation. And then, of course, the green box, our Communication Center here, we've got our supervisors in the audience. Over 116,000 incoming calls to our 911 center. If you've ever been in there, they stay pretty active. That's a busy environment, and they do a lot of great things. And I want to point out, 97%, of the 911 calls were answered within 15 seconds or less, beating the national expectation and average. And so they do a remarkable job, not only skilled and professional, but caring and compassionate with what they do. And then, of course, the bottom there, I can't have a presentation without mentioning our K-9. Farley seized over $3 million in currency sniffing out 200 parcels in the U.S. mail. Farley, I think it's more popularity and notoriety than I do at Public Defense, but that's okay. He's cuter than me.
So do you know, on seizures like that, we get a certain percentage of that over time, right?
Each task force is different, and in this case, it's a federal task force, so we have to wait, and we have to follow the state rules and laws pertaining to a federal task force. But on this one in particular, once the case is adjudicated, which sometimes can take years...
Years.
But once it's adjudicated, I want to say this one's 10%. Is that correct? Oh, that's right. It was 10%, but when we added Farley, they bumped it to 15%. So the...
So he's earning his keep.
Yes, exactly. That was the impetus of that 5% was that they wanted a drug dog, and we wanted them to pay for it, so they did. But yes, good program. Special Services Division, again, the Navigator Program, and again, Councilmember Daniels mentioned some of the great things that we've been doing. I wanted to touch base here just briefly. 175 people housed last year. If you add that to the year before, 2018, the two years combined, 311 people have been housed from Citrus Heights. That is a success story, and it's a complete win for us. 100 people currently working with the Navigator assisted 79 people in getting their identification. And our Navigator, she's not here, but she does, you've met her, she's given a presentation. She just is an absolute fireball. She does great work and works really hard with our veterans, and I'm just so pleased with her. She works very, we work very close with HART as well, and the Winter Sanctuary, this is their last week. I believe Friday night is their last night. HART has been great partners with us and our Navigator. The green box there, this is new in 2019. I know Sergeant Evans is here, I believe. There he is. Sergeant Evans and Lieutenant Morris started our SCRAT Team, Shopping Cart Relocation Assistance Team. So using interns and community service officers, they go around a few times a week as best they can, and we have recovered many of the abandoned shopping carts throughout the city. Last year, they recovered over 500 carts and returned them to their respective business. Now, we want to hold those businesses accountable because frankly, they, there's a contract they have with a private company to collect those carts, and we're trying to convince them that they need to step up that, that piece of that so that they can be responsible for their own carts. But we wanted to take a proactive measure because we recognize that they, they were kind of out of control. So now, hopefully, you don't see as many around town. We've cleaned them up quite a bit. And I will say that it might be easy to automatically assume that those are because of homeless people using them. We found that's not necessarily always the case. Sometimes it's people shopping, they decide they want to just take their cart to their home or their apartment, and they get lazy and don't take the cart back. So oftentimes, that is the case, and we...
I had the opportunity to test the system. There was a cart abandoned at the end of my street on Mariposa. I used the app on the phone, and I didn't really, I was kind of discreet about not letting on that I was a councilmember reporting it. It was gone the next day.
Excellent.
Very happy.
Thank you for that.
Although my email did say @citrusheights.net.
Well, thank you for texting it in, because we need, that's what we need, is the eyes and ears.
But I was, I waited a week to see if anybody else reported it, you know, a neighbor or something. They all wait for me to do it.
The gold box there on the far right, this is our problem-oriented policing, code enforcement, and rental housing program, inspection program. 2,000 calls for service, over 1,300 code enforcement cases handled, 1,556 housing units inspected, with 1,893 violations from our rental housing inspection program, and that's proven to be a very vital program. In fact, we have cases where tenants thanked us for the outreach because they were somewhat reluctant, if not intimidated, by making an issue with their landlord. And because of this, we've been able to bridge that gap and get them help and really create a positive environment and a positive relationship with the landlord and the tenants. And there was one case in particular where we removed over 100 vehicles from two different properties, and this was, took an 18-month project, and I want to thank our city attorney for working with us on this one. I think this was probably the first case we worked with you on, but that was a big case and a big win for us because that was quite the eyesore. This is our last slide, and I won't read all of these, but this is just a small indication of the, some of the projects we started in 2019. At the very top there is the Great American Triathlon. That was a competition between law enforcement in the Sacramento region. This was the precursor to the Epi's Great Race. When it ended, there were two entrepreneurs who wanted to continue it. They started the Great American Triathlon. And I will say, our biggest competitor was the Police Chief in Auburn, former Lieutenant of Citrus Heights Police Department, and we came out number one. So we were victorious of, out of 11 law enforcement agencies, our team took home the trophy. But you can see there, we implemented the Rental Housing Inspection Unit. We won several awards. I'm proud of the officers who have won different things. Scott Kermgard, Dispatcher of the Year. A lot of, a lot of great recognition there has been had. Our social media, Larissa Wasileski's not here tonight, but she does a phenomenal job on social media. Over 11,000 follower growth on the different platforms, particularly Nextdoor is our biggest platform, and this is really our ability to reach out and communicate with the public. We had a critical incident maybe a month ago, a month and a half ago, and Commander Russo led the effort to have real-time information sent on our Twitter feed. And this is the, this is the best practice now in law enforcement agencies, that when you have a critical incident in dealing with the media, they get their source from Twitter. And so he was putting out tweets about once every hour or so, just to give an update to the community and media, and it worked out very well for us. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and again, I'm proud of our team and happy to answer any questions.
No questions, but I would echo your sentiments. Proud of everything they do. I mean, one, you know, it's very nice that the community supports the officers, but at the end of the day, it is the officers and your staff and the backroom folks who have us back. So from myself, I know the other council members feel the exact same way. Thanks for all that you do and for the men and women of the CHPD. Just keep it up because, you know, to me, it's a quality-of-life issue, and you make it a very good quality here, so thank you for that.
And I just want to add to that and say that, you know, I believe if, if law enforcement is doing their job, that everything else will follow. And so I would really like to give acknowledgement to you, Chief Lawrence, and your, and your entire department, for the fact that we really see a lot of activity going on in our city right now. A lot of good, positive things are happening. And if we were a community that was ridden with crime, that wasn't being addressed, these things would not be happening. We wouldn't be seeing this new development at Sunrise Village and some of the other things that are happening. And so I want you to know, we don't take that for granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just one last thing, great performance, but if you wanted to hit it out of the park, next time, you'd bring Farley, and you'd put him right up on the table there, and it would have been an A-plus performance. I mean, come on, how can you not like Farley? Any questions or any other comments? So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Cass, for all that you do, and we know who put it all together, Cass. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is City Manager Items, and there are none. The next item is Items Requested by Council Members or Future Agenda Items.
Any items from the council? Whoops. All right, with that, sorry, it was a little, slightly longer than the last meeting, but, you know, it was still pretty good, so, thank you all. Call the... Call the mayor.